This is our regularly scheduled Jacksonville City Council meeting. Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at six P. M. I will call us to honor, we do have a quorum. Our first item will be our invocation given by Darrell DeMint. He is the chairman of the board of our Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation. And then after that, we'll say our pledges. So if you'll stand, please. Yeah, just right there. Yeah, there's the microphone right there. Go on the other, either way. Thank you, Darrell.
Sure. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just want to pause for a moment to honor and thank you for all that you do for us and how you protect us and take care of us through our lives. And Father, just ask you continue to bless us. Father, thank you for this city and each one that takes a part in it, for this council and mayor. Father, for the city manager and secretary and Brett, he takes on the role of the attorney here. Father, I thank you for the contract we just did with him. And Father, great guy, just thank you for him. Father, just thank you for all that you do for us in this city. Father, ask blessings upon it. Father, thank you for just taking care of us. Father, ask you just give the council wisdom as they take on these agenda items today. Father, ask you to bless us, forgive us of our sins in Jesus' name. Amen.
First, our pledge to our American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Our first, our first item is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution canvassing the May fourth, twenty twenty-four municipal election.
I really don't have any comments, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. The resolution was that the election was held and it was for District Four. Rob Goin received forty-nine votes and Larry Burney received five votes. So we have to ratify and approve this resolution, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we ratify and approve those election results.
We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Galluck. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. So our next item is swearing in District Two Councilwoman Mindy Galluck and Councilwoman Rob Goin.
Same time?
Same. Yeah. Will you go down there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I think it's ready now.
Aye.
Aye, Mindy Galluck.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
And I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Council member for the city of Jacksonville.
City Council member of the city of Jacksonville.
And the state of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
Will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good.
All right, the second one is Rob Goin. So, in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
Aye.
Rob Goin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
City Council member for the city of Jacksonville.
City Council member for the city of Jacksonville.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Our next item is to discuss and consider with possible action the appointment of Mrs. Luanne Williams to the Parks Board, District One appointment. I guess there's a whole lot of.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, we had a vacancy. This was for District One, so Councilwoman Horace, I know she visited with several different individuals as well as Devin and myself to learn a little bit more about the requirements of the position and what's expected. And I believe she is bringing forth Ms. Luanne Williams as her recommendation for ratification by the entire body this evening.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion and then we'll let you tell.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the appointment of Ms. Luanne Williams to the Parks and Rec Board as District One's appointment.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Latitia Horace.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McRae. Now, any discussion? Would you like to?
I would, I would. I would just like to take a moment to call out Ms. Luanne Williams. She's joining us here tonight. She is a longtime resident of Jacksonville, Texas. Yes. She lives right there in the Lincoln Park addition. She has lived there for fifty years, raised a beautiful family with her husband and three kids. Ms. Luanne is a longtime volunteer here throughout Jacksonville. She's a member of Seminary Heights Church of Christ. Started a backpack drive, what, a couple of years ago for students? Helps out with neighbors helping neighbors, helps serve Thanksgiving plates. I mean, you, you, if you need her, you just call her and she's there for you. She sees the park and park systems as being, you know, one that can help improve the lives of residents all across town. So she is excited to be a part of the Parks and Rec Board. She's been part of the Lincoln Park revitalization effort since day one and has just been, her enthusiasm is contagious. The moment she starts laughing, we all start laughing. So her energy is just magnificent. We just are excited to have her in a formal capacity and we promise not to work her too hard.
There you go. So we have a motion and a second. So hearing that, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you for your will, your willingness to serve. Absolutely. All right, we have two special presentations. The first is Police Week and then the second is Motorcycle Awareness. So the police represented, oh, Mr. Jeff. This is a proclamation, Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week. Whereas there are approximately nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the city of Jacksonville. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States has designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. Whereas since the first recorded death in nineteen, in seventeen ninety-one, more than twenty thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including four members of the city of Jacksonville, Texas. Whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police has declared law enforcement officer safety and wellness a top priority and the IACP Center for Office Safety and Wellness promotes the importance of individual, agency, family, and community safety and wellness awareness. And whereas the members of the Law Enforcement Agency of Jacksonville, Texas play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Jacksonville. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by promoting innocent, protecting innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Now therefore, I, reigning born mayor of the city of Jacksonville, formally designate May twelve through eighteen, twenty twenty-four, as Police Week in Jacksonville, Texas, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and the communities across the nation. Signed this the fourteenth day of May, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, sir. Remind us when you're. Tomorrow at ten A. M. at our facility on Multon Street, we'll have our annual Peace Officer Memorial Ceremony. And then afterwards, the new coffee place, Seven Brews, wants to give everybody a free drink. So a hundred free drinks. Show up inside, air conditioned. Oh, great. Go from there. Thank you, officer. You bet. Everyone that owns a motorcycle, will you please go forward? This is also Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, so we have a proclamation about that, too. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country. And whereas six thousand two hundred and eighteen motorcyclists were killed in traffic crashes in twenty twenty-two, which represents fifteen percent of all traffic fatalities. And whereas campaigns have helped informed riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. And whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as other vehicles traveling the highways of our country. And it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules. Whereas urging all of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle, for the riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect that they all deserve. Now therefore, I, reigning born mayor of the city of Jacksonville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May, twenty twenty-four, as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month, signed by me this day of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. There you go. We anticipate y'all's departure by listening to the rap. So now we're down to citizens' participation. This is a time. No, no, no?
See, I have business of the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We were all over that.
Oh, I was all over that. Right, citizen, Business of the Month presented by Shane Pace. So Mr. Shane, and I apologize for trying to leave you out.
I'm a motorcyclist, but I really am. So this month, we are. Our Business of the Month this month is going to be Fortin Concrete. So I'm going to ask you to come up here with me for a moment. Darrell, thanks for being here today. So this is Jeff Works here in the community doing concrete work and he has helped throughout the process that Councilwoman Horace was talking about earlier, the Lincoln Park project. It was a great example of a public-private partnership come together with Fortin Concrete, JECO, the city, and then the FDCC, Fred Douglas Community Development Group in the Lincoln Park area who fundraised over almost sixty thousand dollars worth of the project. And, you know, it was an opportunity for JECO and the city to work together, to get creative and make those tax dollars and those fundraising dollars go further. And so Jeff Works, hand in hand with Randall Chandler and his crew on the public works side, and really got the most bang for the buck. And I think one of the greatest things about Jeff and working with him is I've been involved in some construction projects that did not go smoothly. I did not get a single call from Jeff saying, we have a problem. He handled that very, very well, along with Randall and his guys. And just want to thank him for his commitment to what he does, to this community, and doing everything he did to make sure that we got the best quality and the most bang for the buck. So thank you, Mr. Horace.
Yeah. Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Okay, great. All right, item number nine is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside some time to hear concerns from our citizens. We can't interact, we can't answer questions. Did we get any cards tonight?
No, sir.
No cards tonight? Okay. Item number ten is our consent agenda. Item under our consent agenda requires little or no deliberations by the council. And you can see those there, the minutes, reappointment to the access board, drought program.
What's the drought program all about?
Basically, okay. All right. Well, to be eligible for certain funds and basically from the state and federal government, we have to have drought contingency planning, both in how we use water on a daily basis, but also how we plan for any kind of actual drought, which I don't think we're in.
We're not there yet.
I don't think we're going to be nearing that anytime soon.
There you go.
And we had, our last one was passed in twenty nineteen and its duration is five years, so it's time to renew it.
Just play the word.
Yep.
And just for transparency's sake, e-echo the amendments to the three-eighty agreement with Brawley's Hardware. That is only an entity name change, there are no other changes to that agreement.
Okay. Got you. Okay. So you see, and then also a road closure for the car show. See the gentleman there? That's only consent. So I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goin.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Galluck. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eleven is any action out of executive session, and I think we do have one, so.
Do have one motion, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to extend the employment agreement with, of city attorney for an additional year.
Okay. Heard that motion.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Our next item is our quarterly financial report presented by Finance Director, Ms. Roxanne Abrah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
All right. March thirty-first marks the end of the sixth period or second quarter of the fiscal year twenty-four budget year. Therefore, we're at fifty percent comparison mark. All funds combined revenue of just over sixteen million is greater than the budgeted expectations at fifty-four point six percent. Fiscal year twenty-four revenue has decreased about five hundred and sixteen thousand or three percent from fiscal year twenty-three. The decrease is related to a planned decrease in transfers and less grant revenue received so far this fiscal year, and then also a decrease in miscellaneous receipts. All funds combined expenditures of fourteen million are less than the revenue received. This amount is also less than budgeted expectations at thirty-two point seven percent of the budgeted amount. Fiscal year twenty-four expenses are increased one point six million dollars or thirteen and a half percent over last fiscal year. And these increases include payroll expenses, repair and maintenance services, and capital expenditures. Let me go over a few of our top revenue sources. Property tax receipts of six point one million ended the period at ninety-two point nine percent collected, and they're increased five point two percent over last fiscal year. The majority of the tax receipts are received during the first five months of the fiscal year. After January thirty-first, the accounts become past due and start earning penalties and interest. Sales tax through the end of March of one and a half million has been received. Receipts are just over two hundred thousand, less than projected, and decreased about a hundred and twenty-four thousand from last fiscal year. Last week, we received our March sales tax allocation and that allocation is ten thousand dollars higher than last year, which marks the third month in a row that our sales tax receipts have exceeded prior year. While we are recommending a budget adjustment, these three years of higher than, than last year are good news and hopefully signaling a new trend. Water sales of one point six million, they're about three hundred and twenty-five thousand less than our year-to-date projection, and we're down about one and a half percent compared to fiscal year twenty-three. This is, it's just been really wet, as, as you guys all know. And the water sales and sewer sales as well, we, we don't really know how we're going to end up until we get into the dry months. On the sewer side, one point four million is about two hundred and nine thousand less than the monthly projection, but our billing is up about two hundred and seventy-one thousand compared to last year. Sanitation fees, seven hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars is fifty point seven percent collected, which is right in line with our budget. And they're about seven point six percent higher than last year. Our ambulance fees are at sixty-six point nine percent of budget, increased about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over prior year. Hotel taxes, including the new venue tax, are at a hundred and eighty-eight thousand or forty-eight point seven percent collected through the end of March. This amount is thirty point seven percent higher than last fiscal year and that's related to the venue tax, which wasn't imposed until February twenty twenty-three. Municipal court revenue of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand ended the period greater than projected, with collections increased about thirteen point eight percent over last fiscal year. And then on the expense side, our payroll expenses, budgeted at eleven point seven million, represent twenty-seven percent of the total budgeted expenses this fiscal year. And this fiscal year, a three percent cost of living adjustment was budgeted for all city employees. And in addition to the cost of living adjustment, all sworn police officers and firefighters received step increases in accordance with the city's pay plan. Year-to-date, forty-two point nine percent of the employee services budget has been expended, and this amount is up about six point seven percent over last fiscal year. We have some projects, our water development board project. We issued bonds, a low-interest loan grant through the Texas Water Development Board to finance improvements to the city's sewer system. And at this time, just over five hundred thousand dollars has been spent on this project. And we're still in the planning, environmental, and then the land portion of the project. We also issued bonds to finance some street projects. Through the end of March, just over a million dollars has been sent, has been spent to improve the city's streets. Grants, including ARPA, along with the sale of lake lots, have funded several parks projects this fiscal year. You can see we have one point four billion dollars budgeted and we've spent one point two million of that and have the rest encumbered. So, ooh, that is the Civic Center. I'm sorry, I am talking about the grants right here and the parks project. Three million budgeted and then spent six hundred and sixty-five thousand. And on the Civic Center, that project, we just paid our final bills this month. So whenever I present the May report, you'll see the final numbers on that. These are all our funds and our fund balance. Fund balance has increased just over two point four million at the halfway point of the fiscal year. The highlighted figures represent revenue or expenditures that are either below fifty percent on the revenue side or above fifty percent on the expenditure side. There's nothing extraordinary or cause for worry here. And then lastly, our cash and investments compared to the last quarter are about seven hundred and ten thousand dollars higher. On, on average, our portfolio yielded just over five percent in income and the weighted average days to maturity is forty-nine days. The majority of the portfolio is held in either bank accounts or the local government investment pools. That's so that we have liquidity, fast access to cash in case needed. And I'm just going to move ahead to the next item, which is the, the mid-year budget adjustments. If, did anyone have questions about the quarterly report?
I did, Roxanne. I just wanted to ask, on the ambulance fees, I know they're up quite a bit. Do we know why they're up?
I believe that transfers has a lot to do with it.
Call volumes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's in-town, in-town, call volumes up.
Okay, are we just seeing a lot of traffic accidents or just folks getting sick just in general? Is it just kind of all over the place?
It's, it's a mix.
Okay.
Most of inbound.
Okay. Okay, okay. And then my other question for you on the fund balances, are those where they need to be? What, what are industry standards as far as how much we ought to have in these fund balances and are we at those levels?
Yes, we have a fund balance policy for the general fund, for the debt service fund, and also for the water sewer utility fund.
Okay.
The other funds, zero. That's, that's where you want to be. You want to, because they're for special purposes, whatever you bring in for the War Memorial Fund has to be spent on the War Memorial Fund. And then just balance is zero.
Don't want to just be sitting with money in that, okay.
Correct. But the general fund, and you can see this more clearly in the actual financial report because it puts the fund balance requirement there.
Okay.
But all funds that have the policy are above the, the, um, the amount that we set for policy.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Each year at mid-year, staff reviews year-to-date activity and anticipates the needs and expected expenditures for the remainder of the fiscal year. Budget adjustments are proposed based on this review. Altogether, there's about four hundred and nineteen adjustments that have been proposed and the result is one point four million in additional revenue and a three point seven million decrease in expenditures. The expected ending fund balance for all funds increased from nine point four million to fourteen and a half million. In the general fund, we added three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of revenue, particularly ambulance fees, sale of capital property and JECO financing, and then we added three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars worth of expenditures, mainly the six hundred thousand dollar transfer to the vehicle equipment replacement fund, which was offset by decreases in other expenditures. On the debt service fund, minor adjustments to taxes and interest income on the revenue side and banking and paying agent fees on the expense side. The general capital projects fund added a hundred and eighty-eight thousand to interest income. The net decreased expenditure budget is related to turing up the ARPA projects. In our vehicle equipment replacement fund, we added that six hundred thousand dollar transfer from the general fund. We tweaked the interest income and then also the expenditures reflect either actuals or encumbrances. On the grant fund, we're adding additional grant revenue from the Texas Parks and Wildlife and the Texas Department of Agriculture for Boating Access Concession Park and Satowat Grant Projects. Small adjustments were made to grant expenditure accounts to better align the budget with actual expenditures. And then the tourism funds, this is the hot fund and the venue fund combined. We added revenue for the sale of the duly pickup truck that was used to haul the restroom trailer for insurance proceeds related to the freeze. And then several adjustments were made to the expense budget, mostly related to construction and also employee services as we had budgeted three employees for the year. And then through the end of March, we only had one employee actually hired. And the court special revenue funds accounts were adjusted up for higher-than-expected collections. The War Memorial Fund, we're proposing to increase the expenditures to the total amount that's available in the fund to close this fund at the end of the summer. The water and wastewater utility fund, interest income and sewer sales have been adjusted up, while water sales and grant revenue were adjusted down for an overall net decrease of just over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the fund's budgeted revenue. Expenditures were adjusted down, mainly the expenses on the water development board project because we know that we're still in early phases, as, as we talked about earlier, and the construction's not going to happen until those phases are, are completed. So we eliminated the construction piece. That's why we have that four, four point four million dollar decrease. The last fund is the beautification fund and we just adjusted up the expenditures because they've been having some weekly mowing. And that is it. Does anybody have any questions about the budget adjustments?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
So hearing those budget amendments, I would like to open up a public hearing to hear and receive citizen input regarding the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget adjustments. So if you'd like to come and speak in favor of our gifts, now's your time as a citizen during this public hearing. Seeing no one that has any comments, I will close the public hearing. And then our next item is to discuss and with possible action and ordinance, making the budget adjustments as presented by staff. So I will entertain a motion there.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the budget adjustments as presented by staff.
Thank you, we have a motion by Councilwoman Latitia Horace.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallo, any questions on those budget adjustments?
I don't necessarily have a question, I guess. And maybe this is cyclical or just kinda par for the course. But to hear that our call volume is up for ambulances just does make me a little worried because we're coming out of COVID and just wanting to make sure we're tracking trends and that we don't see anything that's, uh, you know, any underlying concerns there. Um, off the top of my head, I can't think of what they would be, but just thinking coming out of COVID and, you know, the the stress that that put on everything, um, just wanted to make sure we're not seeing any any trends that are starting to perk up.
We actually spent a couple hours with Chief Finley Monday morning. And I think one thing he uh opened my eyes to is the fact that the threshold by which people dial nine-one-one now is greatly below what you and I or many of us would have probably called nine-one-one for pre-COVID. When you think that a respiratory thing could lead to death, as it did in COVID. You're uh, you're more willing, you're more inclined to call nine-one-one. That's probably a big factor in respiratory and heart and chest pain type calls.
Okay, okay, but we're not seeing higher rates of accidents, we're not seeing.
I can't speak to that, like, from a Tech Dot State Highway standpoint or anything, but.
Okay, so we have a motion and second, and we're in the discussion, anybody else have anything on the budget amendments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Our next item is to discuss and consider with possible action approving an expenditure of up to sixty-eight thousand dollars for asbestos abatement at six-twelve Martin Luther King Lot Twenty-three Block One, Pierce's Edition, Jacksonville, Texas.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as you're aware, and I know a few of you were in attendance at the March fifth meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. They considered roughly eighteen properties, uh, six-twelve Martin Luther King Junior, the former Alberta was one of those eighteen. They did end up issuing demolition orders after hearing uh from our building official, Chris Silvy, asked of the substandard conditions of the structure. There was a representative present who spoke to the structure as well. Back in July of twenty-twenty-three, the city did seek an asbestos abatement estimate from ERI based out of Tyler with the uh approval and knowledge of the property owner that came back at about sixty-two thousand dollars with uh one potential um contingency there for electric and some running water at another three thousand. So it's, I I padded it just slightly there for any unknowns that may come up to the sixty-eight, but we're looking at probably a little closer to sixty-six thousand dollars. And then I recapped your demolition funding there. Both the revenues or the available funds at the three ninety-two, two twenty-two, and then some of the commitments we've already made. I did plug in this, uh, just getting a little ahead of you so that you would see how it would affect our total budget available for demolition, bringing it down to about a hundred and forty-four thousand should this be approved this evening. And just on the screen there, you see this sketch, this schematic done by the asbestos uh company just to kinda assess in what uh surfaces and building materials let us in for their abatement effort. If this is approved this evening, um, I know they're holding their pricing from their July twenty-twenty-three estimate. I don't know exactly when they'll start, generally, they're usually thirty to forty-five days out. They do have to make a ten-day state notice, so sometimes that can um belabor things just slightly. And then we have a demolition contractor lined up at a cost of just under forty-five thousand dollars to do the demo. So I think all in, we should be done uh sometime late summer, early fall with the project.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the asbestos abatement.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the asbestos abatement requested or for um proposed for six-twelve Martin Luther King Junior.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Latitia Horace.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McCray, any discussion needing?
Yeah, this is not a cheap undertaking, but it's one that um it it, that property has become a huge eyesore um and a real environmental concern for folks that live in and around that area. And so, um, I know this isn't easy for the city to take this on, but but those of us that live nearby it do appreciate our our due diligence in doing that.
And James mentioned at the uh, at the hearing, I was here and the gentleman that in charge of the old company that used to own that.
No, probably not.
Yeah, he said, uh, he hates to see it, but he realizes it's the right thing to do. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number fifteen is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding the bid for the twenty-twenty-four street paving project.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as you're aware, the city has partnered with Chuck Sampson, professional engineer, to help us with our road maintenance programs. He organized some of the reconstruction efforts we saw earlier this year on Jefferson and Bailey, as well as some of the crack ceiling, and we kinda have the third phase of this project for your consideration this evening. This was right aligned with his estimates, which was really nice to see, the bids come in so close to our engineer's estimate. We are recommending award based on the receipt of two bids uh to the low bidder, Reynolds and K at seven hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars and some change for surface treatments to the segments there you see on the roads. So spread out throughout the town on quite a few uh lane miles of surface treatments. And then we'll roll right into working on uh another bid set with Chuck. Uh, having about uh six to seven hundred thousand dollars remaining for road reconstruction and resurfacing projects throughout town.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we award Reynolds and K the winning bid on our street paving project.
Okay, we have a motion with Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallo, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Uh, item number sixteen is to discuss and consider with possible action a requested replant of lots seven and eight, Block Eight, Rusk subdivision of Lake Jacksonville.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, you see the subject property there on the screen and kind of a location map. It does lie outside of the city limits, but it's on a city-owned lease lot. The applicant's looking to replot two lots, uh replat two lots into one. I've added that blue line just for emphasis to the survey, just to show you that's the lot line being removed by this replating effort to allow for the construction of a home generally a-straddling that boundary. So you can't build a home straddling a property boundary, therefore they're going through this replating effort.
And the same, same owner owns both lots?
Same owner owns both lots and uh they'll continue to pay their lake lease lot fees as as if they were still two. So we don't have a decline in revenue because they're replating, they don't just start paying one or the other, they're combined.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the replat of the two lake lots that that city has proposed.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McCray.
Second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number seventeen, open forum for mayor and council.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything?
You did.
I do.
You did.
Uh, just a little back, just a little background on this, uh, Rhonda Parker, she is a fourth-grade GT teacher at Eastside School. And she called me probably three or four weeks ago, and she took her class to Buckner Park. And the kids were so excited about what they saw at Buckner Park, they went back to the classroom and each child student built their own rendition of what they saw at Buckner Park. And she called me and she's, and and I, she gave me a packet and there's twenty-four thank you notes from those students thanking the city for that Buckner Park addition, and she says, how do I get that to the city? And I said, well, give me a tab because I wanna come pick it up personally and I wanna look at each child's rendition. So I went yesterday and spent about thirty to forty-five minutes there at Eastside School, visiting with each kiddo. And they explained every rendition that they had made. Uh, you probably can't see, but on the bottom right, that gentleman's got a swing and it it's a tire swing, but he took the cap of water and drilled a hole in it and stringed with a piece of string to make it look like a tire. I mean, they were very.
Future engineer there.
Oh, he was, yeah. So it was a a great time that I spent with them. And I just wanted to just publicly say what we did at Buckner Park makes a gigantic difference. I asked them all had they enjoyed the park, and apparently they get one last field trip, which was today. And the request from all of the students was, can we go back to Buckner Park? So it was a, that that's some of the good stuff that's going on in our uh, in our city. Uh, they really appreciate.
And they walked to Buckner Park today from Eastside.
Okay, well, that's great, yeah, that's really good, so it was a good time, it really was. That's all I have. So anybody, anybody else have anything? All right, city manager report?
Yeah, just a couple of quick items, if you haven't noticed, um, Tech Dot is underway with construction of a dedicated right-hand turn lane for eastbound traffic turning right onto Pebble Beach Drive. This is something that um the city communicated to Tech Dot would be a desire of ours. Uh, we had, you know, we've had some rear-end accidents there as people are de-selling to turn left into the golf course or even right into the neighborhood. And so phase one is the construction of the dedicated turn lane underway currently. And then later this summer, Tech Dot will be doing a seal coat project from roughly the Dollar General on the east side of town up to roughly Joe Pla- Joe Smith Plant Farm to take what we see in this picture as the current uh road section and make a uh continuous center turn lane down the center. So with the construction or the re-striping of the continuous center turn lane, you'll have the reduction of the shoulder width, therefore they're constructing the dedicated right-hand turn lane first, and then they'll come back with the continuous center turn lane. So that's gonna greatly improve, I think, safety for people coming and going to the golf course in the Jackson as well as into Pebble Beach there. That's really, there's quite a bit of speed picked up in that area coming down the hills uh and kinda coming from the county and transitioning into the city. So it's a good, good enhancement, and we're really pleased and thankful for Tech Dot for picking up the tab on this. Boating access grant project, we beat this drum for a long time, but I'm pleased to say if you go on our website, it is out for bid right now. Well, we plan to open bids here in uh just over a week and uh to hopefully award construction at our next council meeting and to see construction begin in mid-August. We're gonna do our best to avoid the peak season out there and uh get JISD in school just about back in session before we start construction as planned. Um, with the construction wrapping up, hopefully before Memorial Day of twenty-twenty-five, we're looking to wrap up sometime in April. So you see a graphic rendering there of the new double boat uh ramp launch, the mooring area, the fueling area, but there'll also be an addition of a really nice uh restroom facility as well. Million dollars of outside federal or state money coming into that project. We received a presentation and kind of an update on some pool programming on Thursday, you did rather. And our tentative pool schedule for this year will be to open Tuesday, June fourth. We have lifeguards in training, we've had great success uh hiring lifeguards, a lot of returning lifeguards, which says a lot about the pool and its operation. End of season will be generally mid-August, it always gets tricky to exactly specify that on the front end of the season just based on our lifeguards and returning, they're both high school and college. But we'll leave, we'll seek to leave the pool open until JISD resumes school for their twenty-twenty-five year. You see the open swim hours as currently planned, Mondays being closed, Tuesdays through Saturday, as well as the Sunday hours. And uh then our splash pad, which is at Nichols Green, we do plan to open that up this Saturday, May eighteenth. So that's always a welcome addition to uh kinda kickoff summer for our kids. And then you see there on the right-hand side of the screen, uh, just a quick flyer. So Devin and his team with the Parks Department, uh, they've partnered with Faithfully Fit, Amy Garcia, Faithfully Fit Training Studio, and we're gonna be offering both public uh run by the city and private swim lessons at Buckner Park Pool this year, as well as the opportunity for people to rent out the pool deck and the surrounds for pool parties. And Amy Garcia will be doing some s- uh fitness classes there as well. So just kind of our first foray into programming the pool a little bit differently, but we're excited about it. Lastly, I think this is lastly or close to lastly, but we also received a r- update on this at our Thursday workshop as well. But the EPA has mandated that cities um do inventories or perform inventories of the service lines, which are the lines that connect basically your water meter to your dwelling, whether that be a school, apartment, multifamily, single-family home. And so we've really kinda kicked that off behind the scenes based on records that we have and just knowledge of working on different areas of our system. But we are going to need to engage the public um to gather some of that information as well. You'll start to see some surveys in your water bills online and via Facebook, both in English and Spanish. This has nothing to do with the quality of our water, our water is great here in Jacksonville. This is a mandate for all water systems across the United States. Uh, just to make sure that over the next ten years, should we have lead pipes, lead service lines in the system, we have a plan and that we seek the appropriate federal funding to replace those lines. And then Chief Williams did touch on this um in his portion there at the top with the mayor's proclamation. But tomorrow, ten AM at the Public Safety Complex, nine-one-one South Bolton, we will have the uh Peace Officers Memorial Ceremony. It sounds like followed by some, some beverages.
Great.
That's it.
That's it? All right, well.
This third kill right here been trying to make the city council meeting, and she was late, oh, too late, trying to get here. Would y'all let us speak for a bit?
Sure, why not? If she'd like to speak. Do I, do we need to adjourn officially and then, or does it not?
No, no.
No, go.
This is being a citizen.
Citizen participation, okay.
Yeah, I'll be at the funeral.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, name, name and address.
Yeah, name and address just for our record. Your, your name and address, just so we can make a record of it, your name. If you'll just recite your name and address and then fill it.
Murder third kill, five twenty-nine North Ragstale.
Okay.
And I'm here to see if I can get the property in front of me. It has a lot of trees and weeds on it. And I'm trying to see if I can get it cleaned off. I lived at this place for fifty years. And every year I call the city, ask them to come and clean that off for me. But they come, they come from town, go up Ragstale. And they don't come back down to cut it, they just lay the grass down. So I asked the fellow if he could cut the grass down. He said he would have to talk to his supervisor. I said, well, the way it is now, it'll be back up by morning. He told me, he said, not if it don't rain. Well, I could have give him a answer, but I didn't, I just said thank you and went on. So I'm seeing if somebody would clean the property off. I spoke with the, the help man one year, he come up and looked at it. And he told me he didn't know who owned the land. Said probably somebody in California, and they probably did by now. But I know that's wrong, 'cause they know who owns all the land around here. So I'm trying to get it cleaned off. I got, I'm living with COPD, and I don't need all that every time I open my front door.
Okay, thank you for giving us your concern, we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I got the, I got her address.
Okay, great, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Well, with nothing else, uh, we'll stand adjourned at six forty-seven, thanks for your participation and attendance.